Good evening and welcome to the October 19th Pitt County Board of County Commissioners meeting. This is 6:00 PM meeting and I will turn this over to our Chairman, Mr. Melvin McLawhorn, and the Board is meeting virtually tonight.
Good evening, everyone, and again, welcome to our evening section of Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I ask the meeting, the call to order, Madam Clerk, please.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Here.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Here.
Commissioner Albright?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I'm here. Sorry, I'm having trouble with the-
We can barely, I can barely hear Kimberly.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
That's- Here.
Commissioner Nunley?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yeah.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. At this time, let's bow our head in prayer. Afterward, we're going to ask Mr. Elliott to do the pledge. Heaven Father, we come, first of all, to thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy given to each of us. We pray for your wisdom and guidance as we attend to the business of your people. We ask these blessings in your holy name. Amen. Mr. Manager.
Will they stand a piece of flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, amen.
Thank you very much. Ask now for the approval of the agenda.
Chairman, hands up by Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I move that we accept the agenda, the printing.
We have a second.
Necessary changes need.
Has been approved. Do we have a second, Mr. Albright?
Yes.
Has been approved. Moving second by Ms. Albright, Madam Clerk.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We now have a public hearing and we're going to move and ask Ms. Elliott, Jan Elliott, to come forward, please.
Good evening. I want to say good evening to Chairman McLawhorn and the Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Right now, we are here to have the public hearing on the Corona, I mean, the Community Development Block Grant for Coronavirus. It is focused on preventing evictions and on termination of utilities. So, we will move forward. I will run through kind of what the proposal, proposed budget, and the proposed process looks like, and then we will go to the public hearing. So, first and foremost, the Pitt County Department of Social Services has, is going to apply for a grant of $899,484 from the State Department of Commerce, and that would be used in an emergency eviction program and a utility assistance program, and it would help households with budget incomes below $53,360, and they have to have been severely impacted by the Coronavirus pandemic. So, the total funds that we are requesting, we are anticipating that 73% of those funds would be used for direct help to an estimated 900 tenant households who are at imminent risk of eviction. Seventeen percent or $156,000 of those funds would be used in addition to help with the utility disconnection, folks, those who cannot afford their utilities, those who are behind, and it is a result of, again, the Coronavirus. This would blend closely with our utility program that we already operate, the Crisis Intervention Program and the Low Income Energy Assistance Program. We would also ask for $89,914 or 10% of the program funds to support program administration. We are anticipating three staff to help us with this for a short period of time, and the supporting equipment and other kinds of things, printing, et cetera, that would be needed for the program. This would be a short-term program, and there are no matching funds required. So, if you're looking at the imminent risk part of this grant, this would be to help ensure that tenants work closely with their landlords to achieve more secure housing, and that that is directed to the households that are most in need. We would initially provide eviction assistance only to households against whom eviction complaints have already been filed. We might broaden that at some point in the future if funding permits, but that would be our first focus. We also would be promoting this information to landlords as well as tenants that this fund was available. We would require that tenants would pay part of their unpaid back rent, and that landlords and property managers would forgive part of the back rent. That, we expect, would allow us to pay no more than two-thirds of the unpaid back rent, which would allow us to stretch those funds to benefit more households as possible. We would require that tenants' leases be extended, or that they receive a new lease, so that they would not be immediately evicted after we paid their rent and got them caught up. Benefits would be not just to the tenant, but to the landlords, many of whom are small business operators who have just a few properties that they're leasing. The application process is expected to be simple and fast. The tenants would learn of the program either through the community partners, or through a notice that's delivered with the eviction summons. Similar notice to landlords would be available at the Pitt County Courthouse and at the Small Claims Court where eviction proceedings are conducted. Either tenants or landlords may apply in person, by phone, or through the Pitt County website. After confirming that both the tenant and the landlord wish to make use of the program, then we would collect the necessary information, and DSS would secure both the tenant and landlord's commitments to the eviction prevention agreement. A final settlement would then be conducted several days later, and it would be attended both by the tenants, the landlord, and a representative of DSS or legal aid who would ensure that all commitments are fulfilled, and that sufficient documentation is there so that we can then release the funds to the landlord. Assistance for households at imminent risk of utility disconnection, as I said, that would dovetail very nicely with our Crisis Intervention Program, which already provides some help with energy and utilities. So, this might pay for the water portion of the utility bill, which the crisis program could not pay. It would involve a moderate amount of extra documentation to ensure that the requirements of the Department of Commerce are met, and it would provide a maximum one-time benefit of up to $1,000, excuse me, for households that are below the federal poverty level, and a maximum one-time benefit of up to $800 for households with incomes between the poverty level and $53,360. These are all the community organizations who have been involved with helping us to put together this application. Many of them have written letters of support. They've been certainly engaged in the process. The role of citizens in this program, if funding is approved by the State Department of Commerce, citizens would be encouraged to participate in the program's management during implementation and assessment. They might serve in an advisory capacity if we had to set up some committees to work on particular issues. They would be attending or holding public hearings or community meetings if they wanted us to come out and talk, submitting comments or complaints or inquiries directly to the program administrators or to county officials, and this information, the opportunities and procedures are described in the Citizen Participation Plan, which was approved by the Commissioners on October 5th, and which we have in our lobby. So, that's a quick overview of what we anticipate doing with this particular program. Again, we believe we can help at least approximately 900 families to prevent eviction, and again, 600 or so families with utilities, and so we are looking for us to have a public hearing, and then to have a motion following that.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We now declare the second public hearing open. Mr. Manager, have anyone sign up?
Mr. Chairman, we have nobody signed up tonight.
Okay. If not, we declare a public hearing close. It's the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, you have two hands up. Commissioner Floyd Huggins first, and Commissioner Nunley second.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
I have a question for Jan.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's go back and talk about staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you hiring staff to do this program, or are you-
We would have to hire temporary staff to do this program. It would be very much a time-limited position, and if the finances, when we ran out of the administrative dollars, we would hope by then the big rush would be over, and then we could absorb it with the remaining staff that we had.
Okay, all right. And how will, and maybe you said it and it went over my head, advertise, advertise this, this program?
Okay, we would be advertising it through a variety of ways. Obviously, once we get the grant, there would be some type of an announcement. We would work primarily through folks who are coming, as far as the housing issue, primarily through folks coming through the Claims Court, who are in the process of being evicted. That would be our first avenue. We would have flyers, brochures available for folks to find out about the program. Certainly, all the community partners are aware of the program, and so we would use a variety of methods to manage that.
Well, I hope you will include social media in that.
Well, it certainly will be on the county's website.
Yeah. I mean, because, you know, a lot of people, you know, talking on social, finding out about things on social media, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nunley?
I was just going to make a motion, but it looks like there's some discussion, so I'll, I'll wait.
I think that's, that was the only hand, Commissioner Nunley.
No, there's actually, Mr. Chairman, there's two more hands. Commissioner White and Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Okay, Commissioner White.
Yes, Jan. So, did I understood you correctly when you said that the tenants and the landlords would have to agree to this, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I just had one question. How are the funds, if the grant is approved, how are the funds to be allocated? Will they go directly to the landlords themselves, or are they going to go to individuals, and they'll be on the honor system to pay their-
We would, we would write the check directly to the landlord, once everybody had signed the agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's no other hand.
Mr. Chairman, you have two more hands up. Commissioner Nunley and Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Okay, Commissioner, I think Commissioner Nunley want to make a motion. Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I was just going to second Commissioner Nunley's motion, if all of the discussion is over.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll go back now to Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to move that we concur with staff recommendation to approve the Community Development Block Grant for the COVID virus documents after having heard the hearing and move forward.
Thank you. And Commissioner Perkins-Williams did second it. Madam Clerk?
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we move now to the public address to the Board. Mr. Manager, have anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two people signed up tonight, and the first person is, well, before we do that, before we read that, the attorney can read our statement on public address to the Board first.
Yes, certainly. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks. Remember that comments are to be directed to the Board and not to individuals. Please keep all comments respectful. I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker. When you hear the timer go off, please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
So, we first have Roberta Bonnet, I believe she goes by Bonnie, Ms. Bonnet?
My name is Roberta Bonnet, and I am, I live at 315 South Berry Wind, Greenville, 27834. I'm extremely concerned that Pitt County is missing the opportunity to both increase revenue, as well as act responsibly with regard to the environment, by not providing, properly dealing with glass recycling. I was told by Pitt County officials that glass had to be eliminated from the single stream recyclables because it contaminated other recyclables, and China's requirements have become more stringent. Conversely, I've learned from the Strategic Materials Manager that due to the fact that glass received from Pitt County was seriously contaminated, they were charging approximately $13 per ton to collect. I've also learned from him that SMI will pay $20 per ton for glass that is not excessively contaminated. While I've not been able to ascertain the exact amount being charged to Pitt County for trash disposal at the regional landfill, I have been told by the manager that the lowest gate fee is about $50. It would seem, then, that Pitt County is paying $50 plus transport for trash. Adding glass to this tonnage will significantly increase that cost. In addition, by adding glass, the landfill will reach capacity much sooner. This is very irresponsible. Glass will not decompose. It takes 4,000 to a million years, if ever, for glass to decompose. More than half of my solid waste is glass. According to the budget information that I was able to find, approximately 44,200 tons of recycled material was received in fiscal year 2019-20, down from 53,846 tons in fiscal year 2018 and 2019. Taking the 2018-19 figure, which included glass, the heaviest recyclable, if half the weight was glass, 28,923 tons, at $20 per ton from Strategic Materials, is $578,460 revenue, less transport, less transport cost. By the same measure of glass taken to the landfill at $50 per ton would be, would cost $1,446,150 plus transport cost. My suggestions are to provide education to the citizenry with regard to glass recycling. I noted in the budget that not much was provided for public education, though I was not able to determine from the budget any breakdown of revenue or expense. My number-one suggestion would be require glass to be separated from the single stream. This is done successfully in many areas. Then, provide curbside pickup, alternating the pickup, single-stream recycle weeks one and three, and pickup for glass weeks two and four. Take the glass directly to SMI and Wilson. There would probably be more rapid compliance if bills and tubs were of a different color were provided. I've reached out to neighbors through the next-door venue, and am receiving very positive responses from people more than willing to separate glass. Many have offered to wash it as well.
Let me, let me just, okay, you're on your last point now, so continue, please.
My number-two suggestion, which is less preferable, is to set up drop-off recycling options, so that citizens still recycle their glass. Pitt County could do this simply by supplying an extra roll-off container at each site that already exists, and then widely advertise this fact.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and I'm sure that this will be considered. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, next we have Sheila Davis.
Ms. Davis?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Hi, I'm Sheila Davis, and I wanted to bring someone, something to the Board's attention. First, I want to explain that I am not political in any way, shape, or form, and first thing I want to bring up, the 1990 census for Pitt County was 107,000 residents. 2,000 census was 168,000. 2010 was 180,000, and out of that, there was a little over 87,000 lived out in the county, okay? So, I'm thinking that the current census that we're going to go over 200,000. My concern is, and I have spoken personally with eight out of the nine of you, is that, and I also emailed a picture of the residence where I heard gunfire within 40 to 45 at the most feet from my house, and the first thing you do when you hear gunfire is you hit the floor, okay? And when I could get up to look out the window to see what it was, it was my neighbor that was shooting, and I am surprised and embarrassed. And everyone that I've spoken to, everybody kind of thought there was an ordinance. There is a hunting ordinance that says you cannot hunt within 300 feet of an occupied dwelling, but there's nothing that says that neighbors that live five feet apart can't go and shoot. So, my concern is, for personal safety, well, mine, but not only mine, a bullet could ricochet. So, if we've got 87,000 people in the population, if even 1% of them got hit by a stray bullet, I don't think it's worth the risk. And I think that it's something, I'm not, I'm not trying to go against the Second Amendment, but I just think that it should be treated, it should be looked at as a safety measure. My husband actually has 25 weapons, okay? One of them is a Tech 9. There is nothing that, on the books, that stops myself, him, or anyone else, say, churches in session during a non-COVID time. There's 100 people in this church. Well, put your foot on the property line, and you can go off shooting with a Tech 9 in the county, and there's nothing that can be done about it. I am embarrassed for our county that we don't have this. I think that there needs to be some sort of regulation, and I'll show you, I'm out on the back steps, and let me stand up, and see, there's the neighbor just right there, okay? So, that's really close as far as firing a firearm, and it's not the first time that's happened. So, I did go over and try to speak with, with the neighbor about it, and I also worked from home, so I can't have gunfire in my background, but the main thing is a safety issue. And he was firing out towards the field, but my children used to play in that field, and the neighbors on the other side, they're all kids, there are animals, some people love their animals, just as children. My concern is public safety, and I would like to have some measure, where that way the deputy sheriff, if something did come up, then you could call the sheriff's office. Right now, I talked to the sheriff's office, there's nothing they can do unless it's being fired after 7:30 at night.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. This is on the agendas for discussion tonight, so we'll be, you'll be hearing more about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me, and again, I do appreciate those of you that spoke with me, and I'm going back to work. I do thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, you have a hand up by Commissioner Perkins-Williams. I don't know if that was a leftover from the last motion, or if that's new.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, the last public speaker, I like to hear a report as to the recycling of glass. I think on the next agenda, if that's all right with you and the rest and the manager, but I think it may be worth listening to, if we can make a little change.
Yes, ma'am. We'll add that to the agenda, and just as a side note, staff is looking at options to look at glass recycling, not as part of the regular stream that we're collecting today, but aside and apart from it, and this is part from the comments from Ms. Bonnet, as well as others in the community who are concerned about glass.
I just wonder what makes it contaminated, you know, because nothing can get-
Yeah, we'll add a report to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Manager, anybody?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, we move down to the items for report. I'm going to ask Dr. Silvernell, if he will come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
Good evening, other Commissioners. Have a couple of general points, review our data, talk about our Pitt County COVID operations, and then talk about some indirect COVID concerns. Last Thursday, October 15th, marked 15 incubation cycles, or 30 weeks since the first case of COVID-19 was identified in Pitt County. COVID-19 continues to circulate at a moderate, but I believe, stable level in Pitt County, and I'll review the data and show you why. I think that, I'd also like to publicly thank Randy Gentry and his staff for all the support they've given to the Health Department throughout this, whenever we've needed something moved, something set up, something taken down. Randy and his crew have been there to help us out, so a big, big public shout-out to Randy Gentry and his staff. Thank you, sir. Going to take this, it's going to reboot. All right, you should be seeing at this point the state data curve. The green line represents the cases by date of report. The yellow line is a seven-day rolling average of cases in North Carolina, and if you look at that, you tend to say, well, that, that is trending up. If you look at it by date of collection, I would submit to you that, to me, it looks more like we are on the plateau, and that this is the undulations of the plateau. That's arguable. I don't know that you can prove it one way or the other right now. When, when we get further down a line, we'll look back at this and say, well, hey, this was just sort of the up and down of the plateau. Plateaus aren't necessarily completely flat. So, that's the state data trends. As you may have heard last week, on Thursday and Friday, the state did report its two highest days of COVID-19 positive tests so far throughout this event. I'll go back to that, and then we'll go to the Pitt County view. And I go back to that, and then we'll go to the, the Pitt County view. So here's our curve. Again, this is um, by date of report. The yellow line is a seven-day rolling average. This was the data glitch. This was a outbreak at the, at one of our long-term care facilities, gradual upslope from Memorial Day through Fourth of July. This was about the onset of our Pitt County testing program. The tall bubble in the middle represents the ECU bubble. And then we had a, we had a big day here, but this was about the time that Viden opened its testing center. Uh, so we had some increased testing in the county, and then we were back down as, over the weekend, when today, we've only had nine positive cases reported today. So, uh, there are likely more that will come in as, as cases are sometimes lagged in, in reporting. If we look at our curve by date of testing, you see pretty, pretty clearly, I think, that we come up, here's that Memorial Day to Fourth of July, here's Pitt County testing, here's the ECU bubble, and then we're on the backside of that, maybe a little bit of a bubble here. Again, I would probably, I would submit to you that outside of the ECU bubble, that we are on the plateau of this curve without a clear trajectory up or down. So again, hence my, my argument that we are stable but moderately transmitting COVID in Pitt County. When we look at our case breakdowns, I think there's some, some reassuring things in this. With schools returning, the zero to seventeen age group represents most of our, our school-aged children. There's a little bit overlap there with some high school seniors who may be eighteen in the next bar. Uh, but even with Pitts County schools open, and we have not gone to phase, uh, to Plan A yet, though that'll happen tomorrow, uh, we have been stable at eight percent and still have not documented transmission within the schools. Our biggest group, um, remains the eighteen to twenty-four-year-old group, that's the college and graduate student age group. And then our next biggest group is the twenty-five to forty-year-old age group. Our smallest age group is the seventy-five and older, but when we look at our, our fatalities, the seventy-five and older represents fifty-seven percent of our fatalities, so pretty clear to me that that's the group, one of our target groups to be, uh, protecting from, from the worst outcome of, of this infection. Um, we have yet to see a death below the age of fifty in Pitt County, uh, with, with seventeen percent of our, our deaths in the fifty to sixty-four-year-old age group, and twenty-six percent in the sixty-five to seventy-four-year-old age group. And that's kind of a look at our state and county data, I'll leave that up. As of today, Pitt County had accumulated five thousand eight hundred thirty-seven cases. We would estimate that something on the order of about eighty-seven percent of those are recovered. Uh, means a little bit over fif- five thousand, about fifty-one hundred cases are likely to be recovered at this time. I'll explain why we don't have a hard number on that for you. Um, we've accumulated thirty-five fatalities throughout this outbreak. Our case fatality rate, uh, remains stable at zero point six percent. In the rounding, that seems to be trending down a little bit, but it fluctuates, um, as cases come in. As of this afternoon, our percent of tests returning positive across all providers in Pitt County is six point two percent. That's not the lowest number we have had, but it is, uh, on the, on the lower end of the numbers we have had for our percentage of positivity. Recently, we became aware that the state was adding COVID-19 cases retroactively. These likely come from labs that do not electronically report. Uh, we found that on some days, as we went back and looked for cases, as we, we time out our cases to estimate recoveries, that a significant number of cases had been added retroactively to the state data. Uh, this has forced us to go back and re-correct that and look at that. Uh, so, um, late last week, uh, early last week, we stopped posting a recovered number and an estimated active case number until we could get in front of that. And we've got that just about figured out, uh, and my deputy director was working on that late this afternoon. We may have that up, uh, today or tomorrow, and have that back up. Uh, I would remind the board that everything in epidemiology is an estimate. Um, we want our estimate to be the best estimate that it, that it can be, uh, so we, we took those numbers down until we could account for those corrections the state is making in our calculations. Last Friday, myself, the county manager, and the chairman of the Board of Commissioners were invited to a Zoom meeting with, um, Secretary Cohen of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. In this meeting, Dr. Cohen expressed concerns about rising COVID-19 cases in North Carolina. Uh, Pitt County is an orange county, not a red county, if you look at the White House dashboard on counties. And, um, while I share her concern, I do believe that our data would suggest that we are in a stable period of transmission, neither clearly rising nor clearly falling, uh, at this time. Our Pitt County operations, testing, Pitt County Health Department continues to provide test, drive-through testing on two days a week, uh, with drive-through testing by appointment other days of the week for, uh, case follow-up, uh, contact investigation and special circumstances. Testing is now available at three different CVS locations across Pitt County. Uh, it's provided by ECU physicians by Viden Health at both their, um, uh, their hospitals, uh, some of their outpatient practices, and they have stood up a testing center uh, on Wellness Drive near the former Wellness Center, uh, which is open Monday through Friday from seven in the morning till seven, uh, seven PM. Physicians East is doing testing, uh, several, if not all, of the urgent cares in town are doing COVID-19 testing, uh, and many other adult and pediatric medical practices, uh, provide, uh, pick, uh, COVID-19 testing in Pitt County. I continue to work with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services on a possible surge testing site. Originally, we were told that this would be a turnkey operation, uh, that we would need a point of contact and a location. In a follow-up meeting with the state, the state advised the health directors that we would need to provide staffing for registration and education and traffic flow, uh, for these sites. Uh, these state-sponsored sites are estimated to do five to ten people per hour. We currently do fifty to a hundred people per hour through our site. Uh, so I was reluctant to do that and said, if you want us to do that, you need to give me enough staff to, um, to staff this without imposing an additional burden on the Health Department. Uh, the state is working on that. They are almost there, given some of the resources they have provided. I have provided them with our staffing matrix as to how we run our sites, and we will provide them with a, a site coordinator, uh, if and when that site stands up, uh, to help them get this running, uh, in the, in the county. Pitt County Health Department received, um, uh, a supply of COVID-19 antigen tests kits. Uh, these are the Abbott Binax Now, uh, test kit. These are provided free to us from the state. Uh, we are working with local medical practices, uh, that serve the underserved to provide them with a no-cost option for a COVID test. Uh, some of these will go to the Student Health Service at ECU to help support testing there. Uh, and we are looking for other, other sites to distribute those tests. Uh, we received a little over seventy-five hundred, um, rapid antigen tests, uh, through the state, um, Health Department. Between the week of September twelfth and the week of October tenth, a period of about five weeks, approximately twenty thousand six hundred individuals were tested across all providers in Pitt County. I think that number's pretty good. As I mentioned last, in my last report, the state suggests that we should be testing five percent of our population every month, and that's about ninety-two hundred, and we are more than doubling that number in the all testing across the county. Case investigation and contact tracing, we have approximately eight internal staff members, uh, engaged in contact investigation and tracing. Uh, we have five surge staff from, uh, the, uh, CCNC, uh, and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services engaged in contact investigation and contact tracing. We have requested addition, uh, ten additional staff, uh, from CCNC. Five would be contact investigators, and five would be tracers, so that they would be paired. Uh, and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has offered some potential support in helping to uh, directly enter some data that's currently on paper and not in the electronic record system called NC Ed's or North Carolina Electronic Elec- Electronic Disease Surveillance System. Um, we continue to work with ECU Student Health Services to support contact investigation and tracing at ECU facilities. We also continue to work with Pitt County Schools to support contact tracing, uh, in the Pitt County School facilities. COVID-19 vaccine vaccinations, uh, this remains in flux at this time. Uh, we have completed our application, uh, to be a COVID-19 vaccine provider. Pitt County Health Department will provide COVID-19 vaccine in accordance with the state and CDC requirements and guidance. Uh, we have been told that the state Health Department may directly provide, uh, vaccine to hospitals to immunize their frontline, um, staff with. But in any case, we will be, uh, part of that picture as it continues to evolve. Want to move on and finally address some of the indirect COVID-19 concerns. I mentioned in my last report, school-age immunizations and well-child exams. Um, we know that a large number of PCS students are estimated to be delinquent in their, um, required immunizations. The number originally was as high as eighteen hundred. We're now down probably between fourteen hundred and sixteen hundred students who we believe are behind on immunizations. Um, we also know that a large number of students are behind on well-child checks. That number was believed to be about seven or eight hundred in that neighborhood. To help resolve these issues, the Health Department is holding a series of drive-through immunization clinics to, uh, help address immunization issues uh, in schoolchildren. We had our first today, and have several more scheduled over the coming weeks. We continue to work, uh, to provide well-child exams to, uh, Pitt County students who do not have other means to get that well-child exam. And I've personally spoken with several local pediatricians regarding this i- issue, uh, requesting their help in contacting folks in their database who may be behind on immunizations or well-child checks, and to help get them caught up. Finally, I would mention that the Health Department, we have currently twenty-two vacancies. Some of these are due to retirements, some of these are due to resignation, and there are a couple that are due to termination. We have had to terminate a couple of folks unfortunately throughout this, um, uh, this emergency. We work to fill these vacancies, but our COVID work, and to an unknown extent, COVID itself is an obstacle to filling these positions. I will say the county manager's been very gracious in unfreezing these positions for us, and in being supportive and allowing to us to post these sooner than would normally be allowed, so that we can try to fill them. So, thank you, Scott, for that. Uh, that's the conclusion of my report. Happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Silver. I, I do have, uh, a question here. I was, uh, listening, uh, at a report from the CDC's, that there's a certain blood type that is more prone to contracting the COVID-19. And my question to you, Dr. Silver, if you may, uh, what, what type of, uh, of, of, of blood would this be, and who cares this? And more, what gender, maybe race, that you can kind of elaborate on that?
There are, um, some thoughts out there, and some studies out there that suggest that people with type O blood are perhaps at risk for, uh, are lower risk for severe outcomes from COVID-19. Uh, there may have been some small studies that look at type A and B. Uh, type O is the most common blood, so that, that may be a rub in there. But there is some evidence that suggests that type A and B blood, uh, may have more severe outcomes, uh, with COVID. Of course, type AB blood is the, is the most rare. Blood type is a independent variable with race, so it is not necessarily tied to race. Uh, even though O is recessive, there are, are generally more type O individuals out there than there are type A, type B, or type AB bloods, blood types. So I'm not sure if that completely answered your question.
Uh, that did. Thank, thank you for that. Um, Ms. Manager, you have any hands?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Vice Chairman Coulson.
Uh, Ms. Coulson?
Uh, Dr. Silver, now I got a suggestion, uh, at the beginning of your, uh, presentation, you had said that you, uh, were looking at the data and that you were kind of unsure, uh, as to, you know, what, what it was really saying, and that you were believing that it was actually a leveling off. What I would suggest, my, my background was largely in statistics for another years I was in quality assurance, and what I would suggest is that you use a, um, uh, a moving average to smooth, uh, time series data. By doing so, uh, what you do is you, um, it un, it reveals underlying trends and, and identifying components in statistical modeling, and it tends to remove, uh, what we refer to as noise, a randomness, that, uh, just pops in there at, 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 uh, you know, for no apparent reason. And it would seem to me that the school of, uh, at, uh, ECU, that the statistics department, they might be leaned on, and they might be able to analyze this data using this methodology, and actually make a much better conclusion than the raw data does by itself. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have some contacts at School of Public Health. I can reach out to them.
All right.
Thank you. Uh, you know, the hand, Ms. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
Mr. Huggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms., uh, Dr. Silver, I have a question about the flu vaccine. I was, was told, uh, this week that for the pediatric doctors, oh, well, a, a person called to get, uh, to get their child, uh, the flu, me or self, whatever. And the first thing, uh, she was asked was, what kind of insurance do you have? And she said Blue Cross. And the provider said, well, we don't have any more, uh, uh, vaccine for Blue Cross. So is there, um, allocation per insurance carrier or something?
No, ma'am, there's a, there's a broad division, at least in, at the Health Department, and in most practices, there's what's called vaccine for children, uh, which are free to, um, uh, children of, of low-income families. Uh, and those are, those are free. They're provided from the, the federal government to the state government to local government, uh, for us to administer. And then there's what's called private stock, which are paid for out of pocket or by various insurance companies. So it may have been that they had exhausted their private stock at that time and did not have a, a private vaccine available to them. But there's not a specific vaccine that is available for each, for each insurance, but-
No, I, I, I wasn't, that, that was not, I wasn't thinking that it was a particular, but I just thought that there was, it sounded to me like, uh, she did not have any more for Blue Cross, but if the person, if she, if the parent had no insurance, I asked the question, well, well, I said, if you had no insurance, would she have a vaccine for you then? She said, well, I don't know.
Yeah, and they, they may very well, the, the vaccine for children, generally, you can't swap vaccines. So if I have a dose of flu vaccine, that's a vaccine for children's dose, I can't move that from private or from private to vaccine for children. Uh, they want to make sure that those lot numbers go where they are, uh, originally intended. The, during COVID, there's been some increased flexibility given to providers on that, but for the most part, if it's a, if it's a VFC, a vaccine for children's dose, it's a vaccine for children's dose. If it's a private pay dose, it's a private pay dose, and, and never the two shall meet, uh, at least in theory.
Well, she was told to call back, uh, later in the week. So I told her to call the Health Department, you know, so I don't know if she-
And we do have flu, we have flu, that's flu vaccine that's available through the Vaccine for Children's Program, and also through private pay. Uh, we do participate with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, so she could, she could get it if she has Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and it would be covered at the Health Department as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Ms. Manager, another question?
Mr. Chairman, that's all the hands you have raised.
All right, thank you for your attention.
Thank you again, uh, Dr. Silver, for your, uh, your fine report. Thank you. Uh, we'll move now to, um, radio paging, Randy Gentry and Tim Cor.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Uh, good to see you tonight. This, uh, this report's been a long time in the making. This project, our radio paging project, uh, probably began close to ten years ago, when this, uh, was first, uh, discussed and, uh, first started to, uh, try to figure out a way to, uh, for Pitt County to have their own radio, uh, paging system, uh, that would satisfy the needs of, uh, of those, uh, within Pitt County. Uh, so I'm going to go a little bit over, uh, kind of where we've been and where we are now. And then Randy's going to talk some about some of the input we've received from the community that's, uh, utilizing the, the system, uh, as well as, uh, some of the, um, quotes from some of the, the people that are, are frontline, uh, folks. So, real quickly, our, our first phase of the radio paging project, um, started about ten years ago. The solution at that time was a, was a one-tower, uh, system. Uh, that tower was located at, uh, Winter Green, which is there, uh, behind, uh, the school. There's a tower there, uh, owned by Crown Castle. Uh, that original project was, uh, three point nine million dollars, um, and it was completed around two thousand twelve. Motorola was our project, uh, project, uh, lead on that, as far as our, uh, folks that installed the equipment, and the equipment that we purchased was all Motorola. Uh, we were assisted by L R Kimball, that was our, uh, engineering consultant. And, and that project was successful, um, but it just did not fit the, the needs of Pitt County as far as coverage. Uh, and I'm going to show a few maps. Initially, we had, uh, hoped to bring this to, this report to you while you were all here and able to see some large maps, large, pretty maps to kind of, uh, tell the story, because that's really the best way to tell this story. But, uh, seeing as that, uh, it may be a while before we, we all get back together in person, um, we still wanted to show the maps. Uh, and in general here, th- the sense is just to look at the, at the, uh, in this map, the blue color, it's going to change to green here in a minute, but, um, this is the coverage. color, it's going to change to green here in a minute, but this is the coverage, the the coverage basically from the one-site system. So you'll see the Winter Green square there and the coverage throughout the county. Not to say that those areas that are not shaded did not have coverage, but the coverage was not, it was spotty at times under certain conditions. And so from there, we went on to Phase Two. Phase Two, which was approved by the board, was completed in 2018, so a couple of years ago. We expanded to a five-tower system for our radio system and a six-tower paging system. And that was to be sure we had appropriate coverage. All these tower sites that we've discussed as far as the locations of the equipment, we did on a monthly recurring lease cost, so those will be costs that we will incur as long as the radio paging system is in in place. We also have maintenance costs as well through Motorola for the equipment and the other items that are onsite as far as large radios, the controllers and things that are in the equipment rooms at all the sites, as well as here at the Pitt County Office Building. The total cost of the second phase was approximately 4.7 million. That also included some monies for our backup center, which is located at the Technology Enterprise Center. If you haven't visited there, when you get a chance, I would suggest you get with Randy and set up a visit to see that backup center is basically a, we're able to go from our current center here at the Pitt County Office Complex to the Technology Enterprise Center and do exactly the same task as we do at both places. So that's nice to have. A portion of that was paid from the 911 funds that the state collects as well. So after Phase Two, this is the map representative, you'll notice the, I guess, little triangles, whatever those are, those are all the tower sites. And then you'll see a little area to the right toward the Grimes and Clark's Neck area. After Phase Two, that was an area that was identified, not only through our testing of the system, but also from the users of that area that we had some deficiencies. So we brought that, that's really not surprising, that is the lowest area of the county, so it's not, really wasn't surprising to us or Motorola or our consultant federal engineering that that area had some issues. It wasn't all the time, it was sporadic again, but we wanted to bring that back to y'all and and get it addressed. So we brought that back to you as far as the addition of an additional paging site, which is located in Grimes. And again, we put the equipment on a rented American Tower Corporation site there near town, and that was completed in November of 19. However, it wasn't tested until the spring, really, the middle, late spring, because we had to wait till all the foliage was back onto the leaves of the trees. The leaves were back on the trees to make sure that we got a good testing result. That additional site was about $335,000. And one more map, and you'll see a lot of green on this map, and that's a good thing. That is the current coverage of the system. There are some little areas where there's real low-lying spots where it could be spotty, but but really, this is a top-of-the-line system that Pitt County has installed, and we're getting some very good feedback about that. So just to kind of summarize, the system as a whole, Motorola had some guarantees as far as the project. They're outperforming, the system is really outperforming what their what their expectations were and what our expectations were. We're seeing very positive feedback, very good system, over 99% coverage, in fact, throughout Pitt County. The total cost of that system was about $9 million if you, that does not include the backup center, that's that's the whole system. And again, as we do have the ongoing costs with the with the tower leases as well as maintenance costs through Motorola. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank federal engineering, Motorola, and county staff. It's a long project, and I learned real quick about radios and pagers. I was dangerous at the start, but I know a lot more now. But there was a lot of instrumental folks on this project, including legal staff and management staff, and emergency management was a team effort, and we're really pleased. We think we have one of the best radio system, radio paging systems in the state. So I'll let Randy come up and talk a little bit about some of the feedback he's received from the community.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I've got the best part of the presentation simply because coming in on the the end of the project, the paging site in Grondland, the system was pretty much complete by the time I came on board at Emergency Management last summer. So it's been really a positive experience for me in dealing with the first responders, the fire chiefs, and the EMS chiefs, getting their feedback on the system and what it means to them. Couple of weeks back, I had a fire chief's meeting, and I knew this presentation was coming up, so I opened the floor when it was my turn to speak for any feedback about the radio system, and I didn't stage it in any particular way other than tell me about the radio system. It was all positive comments throughout the meeting about the system, and then in addition to that, I asked for them to send me some additional comments about the system and what it meant for them and the community. And likewise with the EMS chiefs, I took an opportunity to reach out to them and get their input. Starting my first responder career in Pitt County was in 1983, and I was a telecommunicator for the Sheriff's Office on an entirely different system. So over the last almost 35-plus years, I've had an opportunity to work with several different radio systems throughout those years, and I'm here to tell you, in addition with the fire chief's comments and the EMS chiefs, that we have in Pitt County one of the best radio systems, I believe, that is out there. So let me take just a moment here to tell you about some of the fire chiefs. Deputy Chief Chad Singleton at the Red Oak Fire Department, he says that our radio system is working wonderfully in the Red Oak community, and thanks. Chief Jesse Harris is an EMS chief for the Bell Arthur Rescue. Thank you for the opportunity to add comments or feedback on this project. I believe that the radio and pager coverage has increased greatly in our side of the county, and I'm not aware of any reports of failures from our crews since the upgrades. Many thanks to everyone involved in the project, and we're seeing it through to the end. Then we'll move on, still in the western side of the county, from Chief Virgil O'Neil at the Bell Arthur Fire Department. With the introduction of the new system in place, a few problems have been worked out. Pitt County has an operational radio system that is head and shoulders above the previous system, adding the additional towers in the county from one to five has made a world of difference to the radio service for Pitt County. Keep up the great work. And then we move to the fountain area. Again, I would like to thank Pitt County for the time and the funds they have put into these systems. This upgrade was much needed and hopefully is appreciated by all the end-users of the system. This investment shows that you care about our first responders, and that's Chief Jonathan Landon, Fountain Fire Chief, who is also currently the president of the Pitt County Firemen's Association. So then we're going to move down to the eastern side of the county with Chief Brian Dixon, who was the previous president of the Fire Chiefs Association, currently the Clark's Neck Fire Chief. And his statement is just wanted to share how great our radio system and radios and pagers are working with all the components in place. Hats off to the hard work and diligence so many put into developing this world-class radio system and to the county commissioners for staying engaged and pushing it through to accomplish the level we are at. I'll just repeat it once again, I think we have one of the best radio systems in the state, and it it helps the first responders respond quickly and efficiently to the needs of the citizens of the county. So all of the comments from the first responders have been nothing but positive at the end of the, through the different series of of adjustments that have been made in the paging system that was last added to the system. All the departments that benefit from that have just done nothing but sung its praises because they can clearly hear the calls that go out in their area and respond in an efficient manner. Thank you so much for all you do for the first responders in Pitt County.
Okay, thank you very much for that very fine report. Scott, do we have any hands?
No, sir, but I think we did lose Commissioner White, she's trying to get back in to the meeting.
Okay, very good.
Do you have a hands up by Commissioner Perkins-Williams right now?
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Yes, ma'am.
When I came on this board, that was one of the criticisms I was hearing as a commissioner for District Two about how the calls go out and you have to hold the thing up and do all of that. I'd like to thank you for your leadership and guidance in this project. And since I've been a commissioner, I've not heard the negatives that I first heard when I was became a part, a member of this board. So leadership like that is what we need, and leadership like that is what we need to continue. And I'd like to thank you and your staff for making the citizen a little safer as far as getting what they need in an urgent time of an emergency.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins-Williams. Just wanted to add one note to Tim's presentation, that's about the redundancy of the system. When we were at a one-tower system, if a hurricane came in and knocked at that tower, our communications would have been dead in the county. But with a five-tower system, even if a tower goes down or two towers goes down, there's redundancy, we'd still have three towers open and operating. So the five-tower system, even in that case, would still be open and operating. So other than that, thank you for your comments.
Okay. Again, thank thank all of you for the job well done. We'll move now to the tax collection report. Mr. Kroom.
Good evening, Commissioners, it's good to be with y'all tonight. Chairman McLawhorn, Commissioners, Manager Elliott. Tonight, I bring you the September 2020 Tax Collection Report. For the fiscal year to date, our collection rate on real and personal property is 63.75%. For this same time period last year, we were at 62.93%. Just want to let you know that Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes owed to the county. It is my recommendation that you approve the report as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kroom. It was a pleasure to board. Mr. Manager?
Chairman, you have a hand up by Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Nonley.
Okay, Commissioner Ward.
Looks like she's muted, if we can.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we concur with the staff recommendation to approve the tax collection report.
Thank you, Commissioner Nonley.
Thank y'all second that.
As we move in properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes, can we switch something so we can unmute ourselves so we don't have to wait? Is that possible?
We can check with public information.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the General Fund Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, and Brian Barnett will take us there.
Again, either Chairman McLawhorn and Board of Commissioners, I have presented in front of you tonight the financial report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2020. They ended on September 30th. On the general fund side, we are 25% of the way through the year. We have collected 39.8% of our anticipated revenues, and we have spent 22.6% of our expenses. Our revenue-to-expense ratio is running better this year at this point in time. As you may recall, last year, by now, we had purchased the Warren Farm property, so that had skewed our numbers. From a COVID standpoint, our revenues in the general fund are running in normal levels at this moment. So the first quarter, we are looking where we should be on the general fund side. On the solid waste side, we have collected 49.45% of our revenues, and we have spent 18.96% of our expenses. And then lastly, we are now going to present our EMS fund from a financial standpoint. You may recall at the end of last fiscal year, we did transfer some money over to our EMS fund. So we thought it would be important to, as going forward, to report on that. At the end of the first quarter, we have collected 48.42% of our revenues, and we have spent 28.94% of our expenses. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you very much, Brian. Mr. Knight?
Commissioner, Commissioner Perkins-Williams has a hand up.
Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the motion that we approve the recommendation of this report.
Second. As we move in properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We now have Mike Taylor is going to come for a report only on the broadband budget update.
Good evening, just a very brief report from the the last meeting. As you know, the North Carolina State Department of Information Technology, through their broadband office, had notified of a supplemental grant for the purposes of broadband expansion in North Carolina. As also a reminder, only private providers are eligible to apply for those grants. As you know, Cloudwise had presented a proposal, they notified us, the grant period closed on October 14th, they did submit the grant. In addition, we signed an interlocal, not an interlocal, but a vertical, vertical asset access agreement, a lot of tongue-twisted there, on October 9th. That provides potential access if we, if they were to put some equipment on one of our rooftops or perhaps the tower here at the county office building. The other thing that we did is we issued an RFP, as you remember, for high-speed broadband internet services. That was done on October the 16th. That allows us to receive proposals from any private provider, and then we can bring those back to you as a board for your consideration on if we want to award funds. That was the piece where the county now has the legislative authority to participate in some potential funding. So that's where we are right now. The grant from the state, again, that window has closed, they will make their awards November the 9th. Our RFP for high-speed broadband internet services will close on the 16th. So that's kind of where we are. So by the December meeting, we will know more if Cloudwise was successful in receiving some or all of the application grants that they were requesting, and then we will have proposals to consider and perhaps make a recommendation to this board for consideration.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate you. Scott?
Okay, next on my report, it'll be brief. Next meeting dates, month of November will be a regular meeting schedule, meeting on the November 2nd and the 16th, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., respectfully, still in a Zoom environment or virtual environment. On planning board appointments, I believe, two meetings ago, you had planning board appointments, of which one you handled, the, there was a second seat that you were waiting for additional applicants to come in, and there are, there were no additional applicants that came in. We are going to re-advertise and we'll bring that back to you at a future meeting. And then the last item, maybe the most important item, is to recognize Commissioner Beth Ward, who was honorably given the recognition of the Order of the Longleaf Pine by Governor Roy Cooper. I believe this was on or near her birthday recently, about a week ago, and we'd just like to congratulate her, to know she won. And we'd just like to congratulate her, to know if she wanted to have, make any comments or put her on the spot here, I didn't, I didn't forewarn her of this.
Commissioner Ward, congratulations on behalf of the board, any comments? You're a lady without words.
All I will say, can you hear me?
Yes.
All I can say is thank you very much. It was certainly the biggest surprise and usually I'm pretty, pretty quick on figuring things out. But I was, I can't think of a better word than dumbfounded, but honestly, as honored as I could have been about anything that has ever been done, as much as I love this state. And one other little sidebar, my mother received this when she was eighty-five also. So that makes it even more special, thank you though.
Very good, thank you. All right, Ms. Manager, that concludes your report.
Yes, sir.
Okay, items for consent. Could we get a motion?
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
And Commissioner Ward?
And Commissioner Ward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the items for consent on Agenda Eight.
Okay, Commissioner Ward?
I second that motion.
As we're moving properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you very much. Now we move to the items for discussion and Scott on the discharge of files.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a request from Vice Chairman Tom Coulson to ask that this topic be added to the agenda. You've already heard from public addresses of the board on this to some extent, but I'll turn this over to Commissioner, to Vice Chairman Coulson for any comments he may want to make to elaborate.
Commissioner Coulson?
Okay, well, this is not the first time that I've heard this issue come up in the past where somebody was concerned about a neighbor shooting real close to their property. But the other day, when I was called by Sheila Davis, it just really struck a nerve. And what I'd like to ask the board to do is to consider this from the standpoint of maybe not actually taking action tonight and approving something other than asking the staff to research what seems to be practical, but I would like to ask for a couple considerations along that line. And one of those that would have to do with the discharge of a firearm was, was within the proximity of streets or highways. A second would be dwellings or places where people live. A third would be public buildings, including schools. And another consideration might be livestock. And then a last consideration was firing the bullets or projectiles where? Is it onto their own property or might they be shooting into neighboring property? And do they need to have permission from the neighboring owner to allow such? Anyway, that, those are my thoughts on it and I'm hoping that what we can do is say, yeah, it's worth staff looking into it and seeing what other counties doing and then maybe we can consider it. I would also like to put forth that if we decide to go that route, that ultimately before we do anything, that we consider having a public hearing so that people can weigh in at large. Those are my comments.
Okay, very good. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, no other hands are raised at this time. Well, got Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Commissioner Williams?
I'm mute myself, I'm sorry, I didn't see the little thing you did. As a rural person and the possibility of any of those things that Commissioner Coulson has brought up, I would like very much to agree with what he said that I certainly wouldn't want that to happen to me. And I certainly wouldn't like to see it happen at any of the people who live around me because eventually it may affect, in today's time, I think it would be quite fitting for us to do that. And I certainly hope we can delay our action until, until the next time. I, I would agree with that and I certainly, I just thought there was something already in place. After talking with the sheriff and she said that we had so many, I did ask her for statistics on that and we could hear those statistics if her deputy or she, if she's in the audience. I would like to hear those statistics so we can incorporate, incorporate those statistics into our thinking for as it relates to need and the further discussion. Or if she sends them to us, whichever you all think is best.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's, the sheriff is not in the audience tonight, but we can add that to our list of things to bring back his research.
Thank you.
Any other hands, Ms. Manager?
Um, no, no, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, this will be certainly investigated and I, I thank you for, for your attention to this, Ms. Manager and staff. Item for decision, we'll move now to Brian Barnett.
Mr. Chairman, a board, on behalf of Pitt County Schools, I'm presenting for them their 2020-21 DPI Facility Need Survey. Just want to point out on the Zoom call tonight is Aaron Erickson. He is their Director of Facilities. If you do have any specific questions, Aaron can answer those. But the Pitt County Schools is required every five years to present their survey to DPI. They have to, they are required to present the, their facility survey to you all as the Board of Commissioners and to the school board. Their survey is actually broken up into two sections, very similar to our capital improvement plan. The first section is for the years one through five. They have projects totaling ninety-one million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, ninety-two dollars. Their second section is years six through ten, which total one hundred and fourteen million, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three. When you combine the two sections over ten years, their survey has two hundred and six million, nine hundred and six thousand, fifteen dollars of capital needs. If you would like the very specific listing of all their capital projects, I can make sure that you get a copy of those. But the state does require that both the school board and the board of commissioners just acknowledge the fact that you have received the survey. This does not commit the county or the school board to any of the capital items that are listed. But the school is required to present their ten-year survey of capital needs to you all. If you have any questions, between me and Aaron, I'm sure we can answer.
Chairman, you have two hands up, Commissioner Perkins-Williams and Commissioner White?
Okay, Commissioner White?
I just wanted to make a motion to approve that there's no further discussion on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
I have a question. In looking over this list and thinking about the age limit of the schools in District Two, I think Bellbar Elementary has, is a very, very old building and I can't imagine it's not having any problems in this day and time. There were some things I saw when I was there and the playground was even grown up. And we were trying to raise money for the play, for the children to have a playground where the grass was in the play area and they could have those boards out there. So I, i- if, I would like for the school system to consider looking at that item because, and I don't know where it comes from or whatever, but I, I'd like to see the children have a defensive place to play when they go out from being shut up in school. And Bellbar is one of the oldest school in this district, I mean, as far as being built, age-wise. And as we age, things happen and so does earthly things like bricks and mortar and other stuff, pipes and stuff. So could you, I'd like for someone to respond to that question relating to that. And I think, I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't recall Bethel because I live ten miles away, but Beth, you might know about how long Bethel Elementary been there. But I know Bellbar Elementary has been there for many moons.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest allowing Aaron Erickson with the school system to respond.
Okay, very good.
Um, as far as the playgrounds, I, I do agree that playgrounds do need more attention, more funding. We have changed some things in the capital money that we receive annually and have allotted some for playgrounds going forward. Unfortunately, in the capital needs survey, most playgrounds cost between sixty and eighty thousand dollars and the capital needs lists are limited to a hundred thousand dollar more items. It could easily be grouped into the renovation work, but that is, I believe, on Bellbar in the six to ten-year bracket. So.
Well, when I brought, not debating you, but when it, it was brought to my attention, it was right in the way and all, the rain was on the play area for the elementary students. Now Bethel is in this renovation, but the playground area for that school, I think the children need a chance when it start raining to go out without stepping in water and mud. That's just all there too, or grass coming up the tarred place. And we couldn't raise the money. As a matter of fact, I went down to talk to Barnhill about it, see, could he help us in any way? And are any of the others in the area, if they could help with this community issue? So I'm hoping that people with these kinds of resources can help this playground to at least be able to have a decent place to play because it's not. It's muddy when it rains and it's underwater if it is just rain. So, and the grass comes up among, would you look at, take another look at that, please? And maybe we can do something, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can comment as well, in this year's budget, we did appropriate, I think, over four million dollars in additional monies to the school system for deferred maintenance. Now, those are probably more life safety issues and building lifecycle, extending lifecycle of buildings. But if there was any ability to look at that, those monies, maybe not. I think all those were allocated for specific purposes moving forward. But that or the capital one, two and three dollars we provide to the school system, that could be another appropriate use of that million dollars, is it million, million two fifty?
Two million.
Million, okay, million that we appropriate annually to the school system for their capital one, two and three needs.
Okay, we do have a motion by Commissioner White to accept this. Do we have a second?
You have two hands up by Commissioner Ward and Commissioner, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Okay, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
I'd like to second Ms. White's motion.
Okay, as we're moving properly, second, Commissioner Ward, were you going to second it as well?
Yes, I was going to second it.
Okay, very good, has been moving properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Thank you for your input, Mr. Manager, and yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, you up again, Brian?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, we brought to you an update of the spending of our CARES Act money. We told you we'd be back with a plan. What we would like for you to consider is from a procedural standpoint, to do a budget amendment that would allow us greater flexibility on how we use our CARES Act money. We are meeting all the requirements that have been set forth by the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office on how we can use this money. And from a procedural standpoint, we'd like to move it from one bucket to another bucket to allow our greater flexibility of how we spend the money. It also helps us if we do hit a financial hardship, the county will have some sort of a safety net. And it also allows us, the third point, if, if there is a surge and we do need more supplies, more testing, this gives us greater flexibility than what we have currently in place. So what you have before you is a budget amendment and a revised, what the Pandemic Recovery Office calls their CFR plan that I'll have to submit tomorrow to folks in Raleigh. But this would give the county greater flexibility with the money. As you recall, we received two allotments that totaled six point seven million. We had to supply twenty-five percent of that to municipal partners, which majority of that has gone out. So this ultimately just gives us more flexibility in this particular funding stream.
Okay, very good, Mr. Manager, you have any hands?
Yes, Commissioner Perkins-Williams and Commissioner Ward.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman and County Manager Scott Elliott, I'd like to offer the motion that we approve the revised county CFR plan for the CARES Act. I've seen the results and I think was very great.
Commissioner Ward?
Think she's muted.
I second that motion.
Okay, has been moving properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Solid Waste Landfill Cap Repair Project, Jim Cook.
Good evening again. Yes, this project is our Southern Landfill Unit Cap Repair. Believe we came to the board and kind of updated you on the status of this and how it was in need of repair. You approved a contract with the Wooten Company to provide the engineering and bidding of this project. The project was bid and bids were opened on September sixteenth. We had five bidders on the project and the low bidder was Tripp Brothers. They are a Pitt County contractor. Their low bid was one million, sixty-five thousand dollars. So tonight, we're asking for approval of that contract as far as authority of the Chairman to sign the NOSEV Award as well as the contract with Tripp Brothers. We're asking for a five percent contingency as well for unforeseen circumstances, which we will certainly try to not use. So the total approval would be for one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Manager.
Yes, sir, hand up by Commissioner Ward and Floyd Huggins.
Commissioner Ward?
Am I unmuted?
Oh, you're good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Tripp Brothers.
Thank you, Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Second.
As we're moving properly, second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Appointment to the Animal Cruelty Investigator, Scott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have five animal cruelty investigators who are needing reappointment. William Christopher Arnold, Johnny Brown Hill, Brittany Nodato, Rachel Ali, and Adam Woolard. And you have a hand up by Commissioner Coulson and second by Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Coulson?
Looks like he's muted.
I was gonna make a motion that they all get approved.
Okay, Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Ward?
I second that motion.
Moving properly. Second, Madam Clerk.
Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Appointment to the Industrial Development Commission, Ms. Mayor and Scott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have appointments to the Industrial Development Commission as a follow-up from your October fifth board meeting, and at this point in time, looking for your consideration for appointees to, so we can have a IDC to be able to meet and function.
Okay.
And Chairman, you have a hand up by Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Okay, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike McCarty, Harry Plone, Tom Gould, Ms. Ann Huggins, and myself to the Industrial Development Commission until the end of the tax year, June, June thirtieth.
Okay. Do we have a second, sir?
Yes, sir, you have a second by Commissioner Nunley.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Has been moving properly. Second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you very much. At this time, we move now to the Commissioner's comments. Madam Clerk?
Chairman McLawhorn?
No, no comment.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
No comment.
Commissioner Albright? Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
No comment.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
No comments.
Commissioner Nunley?
Uh, thank you. Briefly, I'd like to just give a brief report on the airport. As a liaison, Mr. Hopper has asked that I update the board about the status of air service at the airport and wanted to report that as of October seventh, the air service for American Airlines has been suspended. And that the hope is that the service will return on November third. Been indicated that if we don't get an extension of the PSP that would obligate them to provide the service, there's a chance that service not be extended until December first. He did report that we're receiving great support from from all of our local delegation. So it looks like the folks that are that are working for us are doing the job and trying to keep the foot on the gas to get that deal deal accomplished. Didn't want to give an update too on the, you know, the employees at the airport. At the beginning of the pandemic, it was necessary to furlough five staff at the beginning of the pandemic, and then we did not fill two positions. Throughout the course of the pandemic, we've brought back four full-time positions. We still have one administrative position that is not operational. That's not been not been brought back on, but continued to monitor the situation. And the hope is as soon as we can, you know, as soon as we can get things back in working order, we will. But I just wanted to give that brief update from from the airport, and that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Ward?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
Yes, I do have a couple of remarks. There was a gentleman, Mr. Thomas Parker. He was at a gym and started having some sort of cardiac issues, and a couple of people have reached out to me with the names of the two young gentlemen who provided CPR and life-saving measures to him, and their names are Ryan Staten and Nick Hamilton. So I just wanted to give those two gentlemen some recognition for stepping in and offering life-saving measures to Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes, I have some comment. I like to say to the residents, I appreciate your coming out to vote. But as a leader in District Two, I had before COVID nineteen, I started meeting with members of townships in District Two of Pitt County Board of Commissioners. And I'm advocating for a better quality of life for you. And since COVID nineteen has surged in the United States and North Carolina especially, I have thought of how we could continue that discussion relating to development for District Two to reduce the amount of travel for services and businesses throughout Pitt County. To do that, I decided to create an email group relating to the townships in this district so we can continue coming together to discuss those items that would enhance our quality of life. This is why you see me out in the area of for you to sign your email address. I appreciate your talking with me, but we will be meeting in a group on Zoom. Thank you for sharing your initial comments with me. And after this election is over, I will create a group of for townships to meet and talk about how you can improve in a development in Pitt County District Two. I truly appreciate all you had to say, and I'm willing to continue listening and look forward to our continuing the conversation. And in closing, we do not need any other division. We need some togetherness and in collaborating and coming together to address those development needs in Pitt County. As you see, I have very small efforts as it relate to development in this community. And when we come together, I feel that we can impact other parts of the of the county. As the only commissioner in this district, this is the way that I think we can address it politely as community residents seeking a development. And I'd like very much for you to know that I'm asking for commercial development in this district as well. Thank you for your patience, your cooperation, and do sign up for boards on the Pitt County Government website. And say that you are in this district, District Two, if you live north of the Tar River. And let me know, I'd be happy to recommend you. We want full participation of all members, and our district likes much participation on the commissions and boards for the Pitt County Government. Thank you so much for your trust you have in me and the faith and the voice that you place with me, and let's work together. If I'm in order, could we, I make the motion that we adjourn?
Motion been made for adjournment. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, there was two hands, I don't know if those from prior, but Commissioner Floyd Huggins and Commissioner Ward, I'm not sure if that was from the prior discussion or.
Okay, Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I forgot when I said no comments. I do want to join you in congratulating Commissioner Ward for being given the Longley Hand Award by Governor Cooper. Congratulations.
Very good. Was that Commissioner Ward? Was there another comment for you?
Second the motion for adjournment, and thank you, Ann.
Okay, has been moving properly. Second, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairman McLawhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
No.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley? Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
We now stay on adjournment.